Okay, thank you everyone for being here this evening. The October meeting of Alamoana Kakaako Neighborhood Board is now called to order at 6:04 PM. The purpose of the neighborhood board is to encourage civic engagement to make sure that our neighborhood is a place where we can live, play, work, and thrive. Let's go ahead with the roll call. Camilia, could you help us out with that?
Okay. Chang. Not here. Chi. Not here. Behringer.
Here. Here.
Davis. Not here. Farinas. Lee. Rice. Mariano. I feel. Five members present.
Thank you, Camilia. Public safety reports, we have the Honolulu Fire Department. Thank you for being here this evening.
Thank you, Tess. Okay, good evening, everyone. My name is Captain Gable, Station Two, Oahu Fire Station. Our statistics for the month of October include one building fire, five nuisance fires, twenty-three activated alarms, responded to one hundred thirty-four medicals, nine vehicle collisions, no ocean rescues, no mountain rescues. Safety tips for the month, smoke alarms, make them work for you. This year, the National Fire Protection Association Fire Prevention Week campaign strives to educate everyone about the importance of having working smoke alarms in their home. For more information and resources, you can visit FPW.org. So install smoke alarms in every bedroom, outside each sleeping area, or in the hallway, or on each level of your floor of your home, excuse me. Test smoke alarms at least once a month by pushing the test button, and replace all smoke alarms when they are ten years old, or stop responding and testing. Any questions from anyone?
Thank you. Board questions? Community members? Thank you again for being here this evening. Honolulu Police Department, Lieutenant Segucio.
Good evening, Chair Lee and everyone in attendance. Lieutenant Segucio, representing Honolulu Police Department, District One, Community, every responsibility. I'm going to be providing his stats for the month of September. I'm going to get right into it. I know you guys' agenda is very full. So the motor vehicle thefts for the month of September were fifteen. It's actually down from twenty-five from the previous month. That's really good news in regards to that criminal category. Burglaries is nine. Previous month was eight. Thefts were a hundred and sixteen. The previous month was one twelve. UNVs or car break-ins stayed pretty much the same, twenty-eight. Previous month was twenty-nine. Assaults were sixteen. Previous was twenty-two. Sex assault were four. Previous was also four. Graffiti cases were zero. Previous month was one. Drug offense-related arrests and offenses were fourteen, so which is good. We started making more arrests in regards to the drug offenses. Previous month, it was six. Total cost for service for your particular area was four thousand eighty-seven compared to the previous month of three thousand nine twenty-one. So at this point in time, there's no criminal breaches to mention. I wanted to speak of a highlighted case from Alamoana Shopping Center with increased thefts at the Lululemon Store. The theft occurred on Thursday, September fifth, at about ten o'clock in the morning. Store employees noticed a suspicious smell in the store and had selected, who had selected over thirty-six hundred dollars worth of merchandise. Fearing an impending theft of the items, they contacted police authority. All security began to follow the suspect at a distance and updated officers as with their location. The suspect was eventually located, detained, and arrested for the felony theft. All items were recovered and returned to the store. With the holiday seasons, you know, Thanksgiving and Black Friday approaching, Sergeant Ming Wang with his officers will be taking extra steps to address theft cases coming resulting the Alamoana Shop, from the Alamoana Shopping Center. Before I go into the safety tip of the month, I wanted to touch bases on a question from Board Member Rice last meeting in regards to that trolley stop on Awahi Street and Kiave. If you can relate to her that we have been issuing citations and addressing those illegally parked vehicles, hopefully those citations will deter them from continuing their bad habits. With the Halloween season upon us, a safety tip for October will be food tampering involving candies and treats. We're asking our community members to be very cognizant and diligent in checking the candies and other treats our Kiki will be getting that evening. HPD has a procedural info notice in place for our officers on how to handle the situation and notification that need to be made. All officers that are sent to these types of cases will be also making further attempts to determine where the tampered food came from. However, I think the best cure is prevention. Please check the packaging and wrappers. If compromised, please discard. Only go to trusted neighbors, families, and friends when trick-or-treating, and never take a chance. Double-check these candies twice. At this time, I'm going to yield the rest of my time and take any questions from the board members and public attendees.
Thank you, Lieutenant Segucio. Vice Chair Rice.
Thank you, and thank you, Lieutenant Segucio. Yes, your officers are out there the day, two days later after the last meeting. I observe pretty much every day, so we really appreciate it, and I know the trolleys and the buses really appreciate it. So thank you for your attention to that.
Absolutely. I can't take no credit for it. It was Sergeant Aaron Ostachuk and his crew that took care of those issues.
Thank you, Vice Chair Rice. Community members? Okay, Lieutenant Segucio, thank you for being here this evening.
All right, you guys have a great night.
Okay, moving on to... Actually, if the board will indulge, if we can move the agenda items out of order and move to presentations first, so we can get forum for certain items. So we'll come back to board business once we get forum. Let's move on to presentations. For now, we have changes in sewer service charges starting fiscal year 2026 with Jessie Unavia and/or Creighton Higa from the City and County of Honolulu's Department of Environmental Services.
Aloha, board, community members. My name is Mike O'Keefe. I'm the deputy director at the City and County of Honolulu's Department of Environmental Services. So the main reason I'm here tonight is to, is to talk about some proposed changes we have to our sewer fees. We're going to be increasing them over the span of ten years, beginning July first, 2025 through 2035, basically. But before I get into the details of the increase, I want to just tell you a little bit about our department, what our plans are, basically, for the money that we're going to, for the additional money that we're going to raise. So ENV, as we call ourselves, the Department of Environmental Services, we take care of all of the wastewater and the solid waste on island. So wastewater, the wastewater system consists of twenty-one hundred miles of sewer pipes that go all throughout the island. The sewer pipes lead to what we call pump stations, which pump the wastewater to treatment plants. So there's seventy-two pump stations all around Oahu, and there's nine wastewater treatment plants, the biggest one being the Sand Island Wastewater Treatment Plant on Sand Island. We also handle all the island's solid waste. So that's all of the, all of the yellow trucks that you see collecting the garbage from the curb. That's the Waimea Nola Gulch landfill. That's H-Power, the city's waste-to-energy facility. And we also operate seven, what we call refuse and recycling convenience centers, which are just like waste drop-off locations, and three refuse transfer stations. The nearest one is on, to here, is on Middle Street. It's the Kehe Refuse Transfer Station. So that's what we do. What I'm talking tonight is specifically about the wastewater side, and specifically within that, the sewer fees that we charge for our wastewater treatment and collection, a collection and treatment service. We haven't raised rates, we haven't raised sewer fees since 2016, so it's been quite some time. The time has come now for us to raise rates, and what we, what we need the additional money for is to, is to fund rising operation and maintenance costs in a very robust capital improvement program. It's a construction program that we have planned between now and 2040. The biggest component, or one of the, I should say, the biggest project of that capital improvement plan is an upgrade to, actually, the treatment plant that serves this area, this basin, the Sand Island Treatment Plant. It's a one-point-eight-billion-dollar upgrade to upgrade the treatment technology at that plant. Technical terms, but we're going from advanced primary treatment to full secondary treatment. The need to go to full secondary treatment is actually a requirement in a consent decree or an order that we're under. For those of you who don't know what a consent decree is, it's basically an agreement between a government agency such as ours, ENV. In this case, the Environmental Protection Agency, the Department of Justice, and there are a couple of other parties, parties to that agreement as well. But the main gist, anyway, of the CIP program, the construction program, over the next fifteen years or so, is this one-point-eight-billion-dollar upgrade to the Sand Island Treatment Plant, again, the plant that services this area. So how much, how much is the bill going to go up over, over the ten-year period that I talked about, 2025 to 2035? For the first six years, the bill is going to go up nine percent per year. For years seven, eight, nine, and ten, it's going to go up eight, seven, six, five percent respectively. The net effect of those, of those ten years of increases, the four years of, I'm sorry, the six years at eight percent, and I'm sorry, six years at nine percent, eight, seven, six, five, after that, cumulatively between now and 2035, the cumulative total increase is a hundred and fifteen percent. So it's significant. It's not small, and we recognize that. What else is changing? We're also, we're also changing, for those of you who are familiar with how the sewer is currently built, we appear on your water bill. We appear on the Board of Water Supplies' water bill. There's a water charge and then a sewer charge at the bottom of the bill. The sewer, the sewer bill, in part, is based on your water usage, right? So the more water you use, the more water you discharge into the sewer. So currently, the sewer bill is, is, consists of two parts. The first part is called, is what we call the fixed fee. That fee never changes during any month, no matter how much water you use or do not use. For the average, for the average single-family home, it's about seventy-seven dollars and fifty-five cents a month. The second component of the fee is what we call a volumetric charge, or a charge that, that does in fact change based on how much water you use. For just the average single-family home right now, the monthly volumetric charge is thirty-three dollars and forty, thirty-four cents a month. So your total average bill right now, if you're just your average single-family home user, is about a hundred and eleven dollars, just under a hundred and eleven dollars. In, in, when we, when we propose to raise rates to City Council next month, to raise the sewer rates to City Council next month, we're going to actually switch, switch the way we're charging. Right now, I mentioned seventy-seven dollars fifty-five for the fixed, thirty-three, thirty-four for the volume metric. That's about a seventy percent, thirty percent breakdown roughly. We're going to shift to more of a fifty-fifty charge basis, where the base charge of the fixed fee is fifty percent in your volume, volume use, your, basically, your water use is about fifty percent too. And what that does is basically, it gives, it gives the user, gives our customers, more control over the bill, in the sense that if you, if you use less water, your bill will be less because that volume charge will be less, if you follow what I'm saying. So that's another, another element of the change that we're going to be proposing with the rate increases to council next, City Council next month. So talking a lot about costs, a hundred and fifteen percent over the course of ten years is a lot. We do have this huge capital improvement program. I think I mentioned the cost of the one project at Sand Island, one-point-eight-billion dollars. But for the whole span between twenty, between now and 2040, we're looking at about ten billion, ten-point-one billion specifically, for the entire construction program in total, for the, to maintain and upgrade and repair the, our aging wastewater infrastructure. So that's what, that's what the cost, that's the kind of cost we're talking about over the next fifteen, sixteen years. Also, what we're doing new with, with our, with our wastewater billing program is something that we've never done before. Recognizing that a hundred and fifteen percent increase over ten, eleven years is a lot, we're, for the first time, going to be offering a customer assistance program. The details of which are still being finalized right now, but it's going to look something like this. We're going to dedicate every year ten million dollars to this customer assistance program. And the, the, the money, that ten million dollars, the assistance fund, is going to go to support customers on a low-income basis. For those of you who are familiar, back in COVID times, are familiar with the city's rental and utility relief program that gave folks funds when they fell in hard times to pay for, pay for their rent and utilities. This program is going to be structured similar to that, not exactly the same, but, but similar. So it'll be, it'll be a needs-based program. So that'll be coming. This customer assistance program will be coming with our rate increases as well. And, you know, last but not least, I'll say, I'll just kind of run through the list of things that this money is going to be used for, proactively replace aging infrastructure, provide additional infrastructure needed to comply with upcoming regulatory requirements, prepare our infrastructure for climate change, specifically sea level rise, all of our treatment plants, and the vast majority of our sewers, our wastewater collection system, is coastal and very susceptible to sea level rise. So a lot of this, a lot of these funds are for, for engineering and construction projects to safeguard that from sea level rise. And just basically implement energy efficiency projects at our, at our plants so that we can reduce our overall operating costs. I have this flyer that I've been reading from, that I distributed to the board. I have this flyer, a stack of them out in front of the table, out on the table out front. It has basically more information than what I just talked about here, including what rates could look like over the ten-year period. We have a website that's listed on the flyer that you can go to for this and much more information about the, about the proposed changes to the sewer fee program. And one thing I'll just mention in closing is that we got this question last night, and I thought it was a really important point to make, which is that the money that we're raising, that we're going to be raising from the increased sewer fees, it's going to, it stays on Oahu. It's going to go to pay our, we have a twelve-hundred-member workforce in our department, so it's going to go to pay the salaries of our workforce. And I mentioned this huge ten-billion-dollar construction project, construction, CIP construction program between now and 2040. All the, all that is, 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 it goes to pay local contracts to do, local contractors to do local work. So the money stays here. I just thought that would, that would an important, important point to make. It doesn't go to the mainland or overseas or anything like that. So with that, I know it's kind of a lot of information, but I'll stop here, and I'm happy to answer questions or provide more information.
Mr. O'Keefe, thank you for being here this evening to present on this, which is pretty significant for our neighborhood and all across the island. Board, any questions? Vice Chair Rice.
Hi, thank you so much for your presentations. Interesting. You said that a significant amount of the money that needs to be raised is for our neighborhood board, our district, and all of the neighborhood eleven, sorry. Is, is the, a portion of the reason needed because of all the condominiums that are being built, and if so, how does the developer fit into the overall participation in fees and all of that? When developers come and present their projects to all the various agencies for approval, is there a discussion, if you know, of what their contribution could be or should be, and do they make a contribution? Meaning, would these fees be higher if they didn't? I'm just trying to understand, because we have so many condominiums coming up between Ward and Kakaako, and that, and they all have pretty lawns, and they all have terrace levels with lawns and trees and things that need to be watered. I know where I live, I live in a condo, and all of that is reclaimed water. So I'm hoping that these projects will be encouraged to offer or have reclaimed systems for that purpose, but inside the building is obviously a different, resident usage is different. I don't know if you can expand on that. Thank you.
Thank you for asking that question. It actually gives me an opportunity to talk about something really important. So the, the short answer is yes, they do make a significant contribution to the cost related to doing what we do, collecting and treating wastewater. So, so I mentioned these fees, which are fees for kind of ongoing service, meaning your monthly, basically your monthly service utility fees. But there is an initial fee that anyone has to pay, whether it's a single-family home or like a four-hundred-unit development. That's called a wastewater system facility charge. It's basically, it's a one-time connection fee. And the exact number is escaping me right now, but it's in, it's in the ballpark of like sixty-six hundred dollars. And the way that connection fee, that one-time connection fee is calculated, it's, it's, it's a little technical, but it's, it's, it's one fee per equivalent single-family dwelling unit. So a single-family dwelling, one, one equivalent single-family dwelling unit is just, is like a typical, one is a single-family home. But in a four-hundred-story, a four-hundred-unit building, they could have four hundred, they could have three-seventy-five or four-twenty-five, depending on the, depending on the configuration, and depending on the, on the, the flow, the estimated wastewater flow that the city's Department of Planning and Permitting assigns to that particular building. So whereas a single-family home will pay sixty-six hundred dollars for that one-time fee, a four-hundred-unit building could pay upwards of four hundred, find sixty-six hundred dollars, whatever the two, I'm not good, I'm not good at math, but whatever that, whatever that number works out to. And so, yeah, they, they make a significant financial contribution. So one, one other thing I'll mention related to that is all the condos that are coming up in here in Kakaako, I live in Kakaako, surrounded by these condos that are coming up, they're not able to be built unless there is pre-existing capacity in our system to accommodate the estimated flow. If they, if they, if they, if they want to build something, they'll come to us or the city's Department of Planning and Permitting. Here's what I want to do. Can you accommodate it? We say yes, great. We say no, sorry. When we say no, they have an option to, to build up the deficiency. So if they need, if they need, instead of a six-inch sewer pipe for their, for their building, they need a ten-inch sewer pipe or whatever, because they have that many units. That's a quite an expensive undertaking that, that we will get, that we could get to eventually, but they, you know, the developers, they want to build now. So what they do is they, we, we enter into agreements with them. We do this quite frequently. We enter into agreements with them, it's like, we'll approve your building if you upsize this sewer capacity for us, and then you dedicate it to the city. And it happens frequently, and they'll do that, and so that's another option for them to be able to build. But like I said, in Kakaako and surrounding areas, Alamoana here, there's generally pretty good capacity, like we foresaw the development coming here and upsize the system accordingly.
Thank you. Treasurer Mariano?
Yeah, thank you for that presentation. I wish I had this a little bit earlier. I was trying to jot, dump some notes. I understand that the increase, I understand it's gradual, but for the first several years, it's going to be fixed at nine percent. So the concern that I have is for all of the residents in the area. So this is going to go up, and then I'm sure utility is going to go up, and then other things are going to go up, and we're costing ourselves out. And then particularly, when you're looking at condominiums, now you're looking at the increase in maintenance fees. Just recently, maybe a little bit off topic, but it kind of relates, I'm just trying to look at the cost. All condos are being hit with the insurance for hurricanes. So my, my question to you is, I understand the increase. We definitely need it. We need to build the infrastructure. Is it possible to relook at that to kind of lessen the burden? Because it's been about six to eight years that, you know, you haven't raised it, but kind of gradually moving it up, because when you, when it all said and done, you're talking between a hundred and ten to a hundred and fifteen percent increase, which is needed. There's no doubt about that. And then the second thing, if you can address, it's kind of a, I took it as misleading, but I'm sure it wasn't. We're talking about the pipes. When the condos are coming in, because that's one of my concerns I've always brought up is the infrastructure. Because when they come up, if they need to replace a six-inch pipe with a ten-inch pipe, just as an example, do they go the whole spectrum, or do they just do a condo?
Good question.
Because that, because that doesn't really fix the problem, because as we continue to increase the population in Kakaako,
Yeah.
and we increase the condominiums that's going all around, clearly, the infrastructure can't handle it, because power, particularly if rails may come sometime in the future. But even with the sewage, and we do have, with aging infrastructure that we currently have, it's going to cost all the residents more to repair the aging infrastructure. And if they're only putting in a ten-inch around their condo, it's good for them, but it doesn't fix the long-term problem. So are you folks looking at that as well to see how it can be addressed as part of the increase to fix the entire infrastructure in Kakaako?
Yeah, so I'll take the second question first. So, yeah, it's generally never the case that, there might be some exceptions that I can't think of right now, but it's generally never the case that the upgrade to, or the upsizing of the system needed to accommodate a, a single developer's building only benefits that developer. It's usually, it's usually, there's a, there's a lateral pipe that goes from that building that feeds into a bigger pipe that feeds into a bigger pipe. And usually, that whole network of pipes requires upsizing. And that, even, even for a mile of, or even less than a mile of, half a mile of infrastructure upsizing in like a dense urban core where we live, it is, it is quite expensive. And we work with the developer to make sure that if they're going to do this and dedicate it to the city, they have to build it to our standards, and it has to, it has to comport with future plans for this community. Because not only do we have this, this construction program up to 2040, we actually have a longer-term horizon for planning for infrastructure beyond 2040 that incorporates stuff like climate change and sea level rise. And if they're going to go to the effort of digging up infrastructure right now and replacing it, we will work with them and require that they build it to what we envision in the future. So it's a great question. The first question about the, the amount, the amount of the rates. So it's, and thank you again for asking. It's another opportunity for me to talk about something very important. So these rates are the result of a, of about, of about an eighteen-month-long rate study. We convened a, an advisory group of thirty-five people from across, across the spectrum. We had neighborhood board representation on there. We had some regulators on there. We had nonprofits, engineering firms, you name it. They were, they were represented on this community, on this advisory group. And so they, they, they were, they played a significant role in informing the development of these rates. As part of that exercise, or in conjunction with that exercise, our, our long-range planning team sat down, looked, looked at the period for the rate increase, which is to 2035, and actually looked out to 2030. And we have, right now, we have one hundred active construction projects on the books. We have about maybe a quarter of that more that are going to be new projects in the next five to ten years. When we were thinking about these rates and, and, and in an effort to keep them as low as possible, we looked at that outlook out to 2040 and said, we looked at these projects and said, okay, basically, which one of these do we absolutely have to execute in this period? And which one of these are maybe a nice-to-have, but not a need-to-have, that we can push beyond the rate-setting period, beyond 2035, beyond 2040, so that we can, so that we can put that downward pressure on those rates? All that's to say is that, is that we, we've done everything we can from, from being really frugal in our spending, having not had to raise rates since 2016, pushing off projects that are, that are not necessary, really tightening our belts, you know, something I didn't really mention about is where some of this money is for, is for, is to support projects that are on the, on the property of the plant, that, where we will recover resources that we're producing, specifically methane gas from, from the wastewater. that where we will recover resources that we're producing specifically methane gas from from the wastewater that we can actually turn into energy and and decrease our electricity bill. Our electricity bill for our department at ENV, for the wastewater side specifically, is $40 million every year. So just a little bit, little bit invested into that is is really important. So getting a little bit of a little bit sidetracked there, but I can assure you that we've done everything possible to to keep the rates as as low as we as they possibly can for the period that I'm describing.
Just just a follow-up. And on your flyer, for example, I'll just take one, $208.69. That's an annual rate.
These are
resident.
Those are monthly.
Monthly rate?
Yes.
Okay.
So if you look up at the top, the very first number in that far-right column, 11089?
Yes.
That's your current monthly bill.
That's a monthly.
Yes, that's what you current, that's what I shouldn't say yours, is what the average single-family home pays right now.
Thank you. Member Farinaus?
Farinaus? Thank you for being here, Michael. Just a quick question. You mentioned briefly the capital improvement projects and interfacing with other agencies. Is there any federal funding available to help with these costs?
There's there's some federal funding, and we're still, we're still seeing it, still seeing it trickle in from the funding that's available, that became available during COVID time. The biggest, the biggest source of federal funding that we take advantage of, and we take advantage of it on to the tune of, it depends how much is made available to us every year, but but between 15 and actually $100 million every year are are super low, low, low-cost loans for our construction program. So they're loans at like anywhere between like a quarter, sorry, three-quarters of a percent to one and a half percent. They're called state revolving fund loans. It's basically money that comes to the state from the EPA. Normally, we fund our construction program with a mix of cash and revenue bonds, government bonds, basically. The government bonds have an average interest rate of about four and a half percent. So the federal money that we get, about, like I said, between about three-quarters of 1% to one and a half percent, is much cheaper. And the and the debt associated with those, with that federal money is is much lower, and therefore, you know, that that all trickles down to the rates, right? We don't have to raise rates as much for that. So we take as much of that federal money as we can get. We look for, we look for anything else that's available for wastewater infrastructure. There's not, there's not a ton that's out there, but when there are opportunities, we get, like this year, we got $1 million for something. We've been told that that's going to be available for next year as well. But when you're looking at a program like ours, like our, our, you know, $10 million over a 15-year period, a million, million or two, a million dollars is a lot of money, but a million or two here and there is really, that's super consequential. Yeah.
From the community, Ms. Kim Koko Iomoto, and then the gentleman over there. And if you could step up to the mic, sir, when it's your turn.
Thank you so much for your presentation. Um, so one general question about the sewage, and you live in Kakaako, so you know there are certain intersections that whoop, you get knocked by the smell of something sewage, we don't know. And several, and people give different explanations. Some people say the pipes are too small, they can't handle it. Some people say the pipes are too big, and there's not enough people moving affluent through. Um, what, and some people say that it's like seawater or something. So what is the source of that and how will it ever go away?
Thank you. That's a great question. So let me just first say that if you if you let me know, we're happy to look into any location that you're aware of. I can, I can, we have the collection. Okay. 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 I haven't, no, to be honest with you, the only Kamakei and Awahe, yes. Yeah, that's right next to the, right between the fancy condo building and the other, yeah, yeah.
Alamoana and Atkinson Drive.
Oh, okay. So I, so I'm going to make notes of these and look into these. But we have, we have trouble call crews that go out and do this this exact thing. They go out and 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 diagnose problems and try to fix it. But the the reason is is a combination of the things that you mentioned. It's sometimes the pipes are oversized and the flow doesn't pass through as quickly. Sometimes with the, this is a little bit more of a tricky problem to address, but sometimes the infrastructure, we actually have, we have sewer pipes, believe it or not, that are over 100 years old, that are still in use. They're clay and they just, they just, they work. I don't make them like I used to. But the, some of the older pipes, they're, our system works on a gravity system. It pumps gravity, pump gravity all the way to the treatment plant. Some of the older pipes actually have sags in them. So when, normally, when they would be going down a gravity slope, if there's a sag, the water could become trapped and stagnant. That's a trickier problem to fix. We can flush it occasionally, and that and that helps. So we have, we have certain areas of the island that we do flush because of that exact reason. But long-term, what that really requires is like a refurbishment of the pipe, which is, you know, a big project. But I'll make notes of these locations and we'll we'll send a crew out to check them out. Yeah.
I have a question about, so as you know, the city and county is looking at empty homes taxes. Um, when you mentioned changing the the calculation between the set fee and the per-usage fee, I'm imagining that, as you know, again, in Kakaako, there are many empty homes, right? And we all kind of pay for the infrastructure. So I guess my question is two parts. Is most of the cost that you have, is it based on infrastructure or operations? And is that why you shifted from 70/30 to 50/50? That's the first part.
No, that's a, that's a great question. So we really, so the the short answer is it's it's not, but I could see how that how that makes sense. That's not why we shifted 50/50. We really wanted, we really wanted to give a, for the shift to 50/50, we wanted to give a people an option to to reduce their bill by conserv, by using less water, but also to promote water conservation as well. And so that was the main reason, the 50, the 50/50 shift, another reason, it's kind of a secondary reason, was that when you look at the total revenue that our department brings in, 50, if we if we if we think in terms of 50/50, that 50% of that revenue right now, actually, just less than 50% of that revenue right now, goes to pay our existing debt service that funds our construction program. The balance goes to pay operations and maintenance and salaries and stuff like that. It's it's roughly 50/50 for the for the debt and the operations, yes. But our our cap, our construction budget every year is between 300 and 700,000, 700 billion a year. Yeah.
I was concerned that with this, with the new pricing, that investors who keep their units empty, right, so would actually end up having a smaller bill. And the costs really don't go, I I thought the costs don't really go away. It's just now being dispersed more to to the local people who live here. Okay, but, and then my other question is, because, is, you know, large hotels, do they get a discounted bulk rate? Now, it says per flush, basically, per use.
That's a great question. Like, our our biggest, our biggest, five of our 10 biggest customers, largest customers are hotels, like Hyatt, Sheraton, and Waikiki. There is, there is no rate. It's it's solely, as I kind of described a little bit earlier, it's solely, it's solely based on the calculated flow from that unit. That's the volume charge. And then there's that the base charge, which is that however many equivalent, single-family dwelling units they're determined to have. In some cases, four or five, 600. That four or five, 600 times the base charge every month, so it would be, right now, it's $77. It's quite expensive. No discount.
Thank you. Mr. O'Kee, we have one more question for, from another community member, sir, if you could state your name as well.
Of course. My name's Dale Vanderbrink from Sub District 1 over here. So luckily, I moved here recently, so I'm happy to be a part of the neighborhood board community here. Um, I just had a question in relation to the average cost. I believe the number you gave was about $117 per single-family home. So after the 15 years of increases of 115% and switching to a 50/50 variable and its cost, what is going to be the average cost for a single-family home?
So thank you for that, thank you for that question. And so the answer, the answer to the question is going to go, so the current average cost is $110.89. That average cost, again, single-family home that uses about 9,000 gallons of water a month, that's what average is. It'll be 248.53 in 20, basically fiscal year 2035, so starting July 1, 2034. And and just for everyone's awareness, I'm reading from a chart that has the average total bill every year between now and then. That chart is on the flyer that I mentioned. It's at the, out at the front of the table here, so feel free to, feel free to grab.
Thank you. No further questions from, oh.
Just one last follow-up, actually a suggestion. This is a pretty significant increase, and it's also talking about the infrastructure. Uh, I would hope that you folks have a public awareness campaign that will go on to notify all residents that this is taking place. You know, if you're coming just to the neighborhood board, it's good, but it's not good enough. And so, you know, public announcements or anything, a campaign to let them know. And it's also part of conservative, of conservation to save water.
Yes. So just quickly on that note, we have, this is the, this is the second neighborhood board we're at. My my boss, our director, is at another neighborhood board tonight. Three total. We did one last night, two tonight. Tomorrow, we have, we have a press conference at 1:30 at our Sand Island Wastewater Treatment Plant. I think it'll get pretty good press coverage. We've already got RSVPs from, I think, at least two of the major news stations. That's tomorrow. Thursday morning, our director is going to go on morning news to talk about, to talk about this very subject on Thursday morning. Mid-November, we're going to do two community meetings, possibly more, at the city's Mission Memorial Auditorium on, at City Hall. Community meetings, come, learn about, talk about, ask questions about this. We're going to do one here at Mission Memorial, one out in Kapalehale. That's mid-November. Um, and there's, there's a few other things. And then, of course, this has to go through city council. So that's a very public process that'll, that'll get a lot of attention. But I appreciate that comment. We're trying to get out as much as we can and always, always open to suggestions as well. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. O'Kee, for presenting this evening and for all your efforts to let all the neighborhood boards know about this increase. So thank you.
Thank you for having me.
Um, let's go back. Since we did put our agenda out of order, we're going back to board business as we have enough members of the board to vote on certain items that will need quorum. So going back to board business, item 3.1, filling of board vacancies. We have two vacancies in Sub District 1 and one vacancy in Sub District 3. Do we have any nominations for Sub District 1? Okay, any nominations for Sub District 3? We have one vacancy. Okay, we are going to um, agenda item in November. Just to give everyone a heads up, November will be our last board meeting for the year. We do have a recess in December for the holiday season. And again, the neighborhood boards will be having elections in February. So just wanted to get the word out there. If you would like to join our board or any boards, feel free to do so. It's, more information is on the NCO website. Okay, moving on to approval of the September 24, 2024 meeting minutes. Does anyone have any edits, questions, comments, concerns?
I move that they are approved.
Okay. Okay. If no one opposes, okay. Meeting minutes approved. Thank you, board. Report from October 10 Action Committee meeting. We have Ms. Emma Davis, who is our Action Committee Chair online.
Kathleen, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. I'll keep my video off because it seems to be a connection issue. Really quick report, we we kind of doubled down on the good government resolution and talked about, you know, input from community members on large community-facing decisions. And and there's a lot more we want to build into that, and I think more to be done. But I think from the the members of the community that were able to join us, and Kathleen as well, we really kind of started to talk about what that might look like in terms of the expectations we have for government representatives, agencies, you know, organizations that want to build and complete projects in our neighborhood to make sure that they're actually getting, you know, a reasonable amount of input from the community on on their thoughts. And I think, you know, it's come up in a couple of meetings before, and the HCDA meeting that Kathleen and I were able to attend. But in general, I think I'm I'm noticing that a lot of projects, because there's no opposition or no strong opposition, because people might not be aware, that we're moving forward with projects that people might not necessarily fully support. And I think, you know, we're just talking about what support for community projects and community-supported decision-making and what that looks like, and how we might move forward in collecting data and making sure that our decisions as a neighborhood board are are community-informed and data, data-led. So there was that, and because of the members, we did touch a little bit on pickleball and some concerns that were come up with came from a resident. And I, the only thing I can repeat with that is Kathleen, I know is working really, really hard in conjunction with me and and other board members and other community members to get a date set for a meeting that specifically, we'll talk about that. And we will release, hopefully, at least a draft resolution soon to help facilitate that discussion and to get further input before we present a finalized one to the neighborhood board. And that's all.
Thank you, Committee Chair Davis.
Yeah.
Or questions? Community questions? Answer? And if you could state your name as well.
Roy Howard, Alamoana resident. Um, I was at that Action Committee meeting, and I asked, Emma did give us a preliminary vision of what she may expect the resolution to be, which I wholeheartedly disagreed with. But I did ask for the data that she's using to make that determination, and I'm still waiting to get that. As well as I'm waiting for the request from Parks and Rec for the RISER one-day study that they did to convert my 15-day, 1,200-point study. I am also waiting for the definition of what heavy utilization means, and I'm still waiting for the utilization goals for Parks and Rec.
Mr. Roy Howard, thank you. And thank you for attending our Action Committee meeting as well, which was also attended by community members Joy Rogers and Brian Rogers. Moving on to item 3.4, consideration of the good government reforms resolution. We had this on our agenda last month, but we were unable to vote on it. So if we can pull that up, Camilia, so people are able to see what that resolution is. And for both the board and the members of the public, this is with the link, which is on our agenda. And we can just scroll through it real quick. We need to do it like right in the middle. Or just where the second whereas is. Thank you. Okay, we will leave that up there. For, I believe we've had sufficient time to read this over. If we are ready to vote on it, we do have quorum. So I will have our neighborhood assistant, Camilia, help us with the vote. Does, does the board have any, any questions or discussion on this resolution? Treasurer Mariano?
Yeah, could you give a reader's digest version of the intent of this resolution, please?
Sure. I mean, I can read it. So it basically talks about more transparency when it comes to information as well as campaign contributions. So if So if, if you want to look at it quickly, look at the, you can look at the be it further resolved portion, which calls for prohibiting campaign contributions from the following individuals and entities, inactive viable comprehensive public financing option for candidates, and prohibit laundering campaign contributions through other candidate campaigns. It also emphasizes transparency. So if you look at the therefore be it portion, number one says each committee shall make all testimony it receives immediately available for public review at least twenty hours before the hearing and at least two hours before the hearing for late testimony. I'll just read through it. Each committee shall vote on the disposition of all bills referred to the committee. Bills that do not create or expend funds, non-fiscal bills shall not be referred to finance committees. All bills shall be circulated for cosponsorship to all legislators in their respective chamber. And any House bill with at least seventeen co-introducers and any Senate bill with at least nine co-introducers shall be scheduled for at least one hearing. Amendments to bills must be written in the form of the possession of legislators before the amended version of the bill can be voted on. So the essence of the bill calls for transparency, both in informing the public of how the bills are coming along and when it comes to contributions to legislators. Can we scroll? Okay. Any further questions? Comments? Can we get a motion to vote on the resolution? Okay.
My second.
Okay. Let's go ahead and vote on this resolution.
Before you, before you go, there's a second, just a quick question.
Sure.
The question is, has this gone through neighborhood, the neighborhood council, commit, the neighborhood commission legal? Just to make sure that it's legally represented. Because if not, what I was, I would, I would support this resolution going forward pending a legal review before submitting it.
Okay, can we make it? Thank you, Member Mariano, we can do that. So to Member Mariano's, oh, go ahead.
I've been tracking this, it's this community generated document. So it did pass the Chinatown Downtown Neighborhood Board unanimously. And then just last night, it passed the McCully Mo'iliili Board unanimously. So the, um, why, um, can, can I? No, 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 they didn't. But it's, this bill is actually very similar. I don't know if you remember that this neighborhood board passed the anti-corruption resolution. Do you remember that? The anti-corruption resolution that then went to the Democratic Party. And that actually, then it got adopted by the Democratic Party of Hawaii. But it's a few of the same things. I don't remember that we got legal counsel then.
Member Mariano, thank you for voicing your concerns. So we have. Camilia, if you could take a roll call vote.
Okay, so the motion is to adopt the Good Government Reforms Resolution. Chang? Not here yet. Chi?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Arenas? Mariano? Rice? Ferengi?
Aye.
Lee?
Yes.
Seven ayes, zero noes, zero abstentions. The motion passes.
Thank you, board, for voting on considering this resolution. Moving on to item three point five, discussion on board representation at HCDA meetings. So Action Committee Chair Emma Davis and I had attended the last HCDA meeting earlier in the month. And our former chair, Ryan Tam, had mentioned that back in the day, we had someone from the board who would go to meetings for HCDA to represent the board, similar to how Treasure Mariano is our representative for the NPO. So with that being said, would anyone from the board be willing to be our HCDA representative from Alamoana Kakaakaka neighborhood board to attend the HCDA meetings and bring back to us what is discussed in those meetings? It is in the daytime, as Vice Chair Rice had mentioned, it's, it's around like nine or ten AM. So it, it would require someone who would be flexible enough to be able to attend that meeting. So if anyone from the board would like to volunteer?
I can go.
I'll volunteer. Go ahead.
Member Ferengi, volunteer to be our board representative?
Yes, I will go. Yes.
Okay. Member Davis, did you have a question?
No, I was just, I, I think there's a couple of different people that we're offering. And I know we had mentioned, talking about a rotating, you know, rotating representative too. So we all kind of take a share of it and then figuring it that way. If, if one person didn't want to do it, because I'm also happy to go, I have flexible work as well, which makes it a little bit easy. Or as a substitute, you know, if, if for some reason the representative can't go. But happy to go, happy to make it a rotational thing, but happy to have Caroliner or other representatives as well. Thanks.
I'd participate in a rotation, participation, very much.
Same.
Okay, thank you, board members Ferengi, Davis, and Rice. So just so we have eight persons. Ferengi as a representative and to Secretary Davis's suggestion, we'll rotation with Vice Chair Rice and Secretary Davis as alternates for, and Member Farinas. This is awesome. Thank you, folks. So we will have HCDA representation, which is absolutely crucial, especially since a lot of the decisions that they make directly affect our neighborhood. So thank you, board members. Okay, attendance at other meetings. Member Farinas?
Just wanted to say thank you to the mayor's office. I attended his ceremonial flag raising to kick off a Happy Pride Month. So really happy that we're represented and we're all being inclusive of everyone, young, middle aged, old age, whatever have you. But just a celebration and just really thankful and pleased of the mayor and all the other agencies involved. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Farinas. Going back to presentations, we have Mr. Spencer Lee from JL Capital to present on affordable housing. Thank you for being here this evening. So just to give the community a bit of a background, Mr. Lee, no relation, had reached out to the board to see how they could contribute to the community. And Spencer does classes to educate the public on affordable housing. This is a, a summarized presentation, but he will typically have them for three hours for the community members. So I'll let him speak on that further.
Thank you, Chairwoman Lee, and thank you, board members. So my name is Spencer Lee and I do teach the affordable housing class for the Honolulu Board of Realtors. It's called HOPE, Housing Opportunities Are Possible For Everyone. I currently work for JL Capital, a local developer. I just recently started with them. And I've done hundreds of eligibility checks for buyers who are and trained groups of people who needed to do those eligibility checks. So I'm not here to say that the current rules or policies are good or bad. I'm not taking a position. I'm just passionate about the topic and I welcome the opportunity to share the information that I've gathered about this topic with the community. Next slide. So what is affordable for sale housing? Let's first be clear, I'm not going to talk about affordable rental housing. It's a completely different topic. But for sale housing is, of course, where people would buy the unit. And affordable for sale housing, the idea is that people would buy these units at below market rates, making them more accessible to a wider range of residents. And it's always going to be local residents. What is the goal? Boiled down, it's to help local residents enter the housing market when they might not otherwise be able to. So it's not intended to get everybody into a home that they could buy. It's truly intended for gap housing, where people just need a little bit of help because they can't get onto the housing ladder. But maybe they would if they could drop, you know, get a unit for a little bit lower than what the market is pricing certain units at. So it's really a stepping stone kind of a concept. And the idea is that these programs are for most people, but not for all. These initiatives try to address various segments of the housing population, up to a hundred forty percent AMI typically. So typically, we're talking between eighty to a hundred forty when we talk about affordable for sale housing. So it's not for people below that and it's not intended for people above that. Next slide. So in the state of we have three regulatory agencies that oversee affordable housing. Thank you. The first, the first is HCDA, and that stands for the Hawaii Community Development Authority, which regulates and oversees development primarily in Kakaako. They do also oversee a few other areas like Aloha Stadium and Haia. We have the HHFDC as well, which is the Hawaii Housing Finance and Development Corporation. And they oversee affordable housing, among other programs, for the entire state of Hawaii. So very broad. And lastly, the third regulatory agency is the DPP, the Department of Planning and Permitting. And it's cut off here, but they leverage their land use authority to incentivize affordable housing. So again, affordable housing is always going to look at what's called AMI, area median income. This slide here, this chart, it shows the HHFDC income eligibility limits. The HCDA might have a different chart and the City and County DPP will have a different chart as well. They'll be very close, but also different. So just be aware of that. But for the HHFDC, again, the regulatory agency that oversees affordable housing for the entire state, this is their chart. So when we look at the eighty percent AMI that I've highlighted, the AMI percentages are on the vertical axis and the horizontal portion of the chart shows the one person, two person, three, four, and five person household sizes. So I just highlighted an example just to get a feel of what we're looking at here. So folks who are determined to be eighty percent AMI by the HHFDC, three household member who's an adult, they would add up all of their income together and that amount would be a hundred thousand, two hundred forty dollars. For the one hundred percent AMI limit, again, with a household size of three, it would be a hundred twenty five thousand, three hundred dollars. And for a hundred twenty percent AMI, that would be a hundred fifty thousand, three hundred sixty dollars. Cut off on my slide is the one hundred forty percent AMI level and that's at a hundred seventy five thousand, four hundred twenty dollars. Next slide, please. Okay. So I'm sure that we're, you know, asked all the time or board members or, you know, people in the community, how are these affordable for sale units priced? You know, the, the housing costs in Hawaii are very, very high. And I think it's, it's very natural for people to wonder, you know, how is this unit affordable? You know, who, who came up with these sales prices and how did we get to these really high numbers? So they're always priced. They're always priced based on a specific debt to income ratio. So it's designed so that you would take the monthly housing costs, which monthly housing costs would be if you had a mortgage, so your principal and interest, your taxes, your insurance and your maintenance fees. You take that bundle of, of figures and you would divide it by your income. And then we would see what that ratio is. So that housing ratio, most, well, the three agencies, the HCDA, the HHFDC and the DPP, they will go off of a thirty three or thirty eight percent debt to income ratio. You know, they have to make some assumptions, like how much are you putting down? Also, what are the interest rates? But once they figure out what those assumed variables are going to be, they're going to come up with a mortgage payment and they're going to look at that ratio. So, you know, a very simple, easy example is take somebody or a family, you know, group of people who combined make a hundred thousand or ten thousand dollars a month. So if their housing costs were three hundred, sorry, three thousand, three hundred dollars, then their debt to income ratio would be thirty three percent. And if their housing payment was three thousand, eight hundred dollars, their housing ratio would be thirty eight percent. Okay? So the agencies look to ensure that the home prices are set such that the housing ratio, the debt to income ratio, does not exceed either thirty three or thirty eight percent per the Okay, so sorry that it's small for you guys in the back, but this chart is what the HHFDC comes out with. And they show what the max sales prices are. Okay, so again, it's HHFDC, County of Honolulu, for a one bedroom unit. On the horizontal headline here, I highlighted the eighty percent AMI, the hundred percent AMI, the hundred twenty and the hundred forty percent AMI. And I'm highlighting right now the six and a half percent interest rate. So if you have somebody who makes, a household, that is, that make eighty percent of the area median income, then if the HHFDC approved this project to go to market, they would mandate to the developer that the developer could not sell an eighty percent AMI unit, one bedroom unit, for more than three hundred forty six thousand, three hundred dollars. And on your one hundred percent AMI units, the developer could not sell them for more than four hundred thirty two thousand, nine hundred dollars. For the units that are targeted for a hundred twenty percent AMI folks or families, they couldn't sell it for more than five hundred nineteen thousand, five hundred dollars. And for the families that make a hundred forty percent AMI, the developer could not sell a one bedroom unit for more than six hundred six thousand dollars. So affordable for sale units, they always come with these restrictions. There's more than a few, but these are the, probably the most important ones for folks. First is that there's an occupancy period. So the units must be owner occupied. These restrictions can range between twenty and thirty years. Simply, if you buy affordable housing unit, you have to promise to live in there for a certain period of time. And there's also resale restrictions, which if you didn't satisfy the required occupancy period and you were to sell the unit before you satisfied that requirement, you would be restricted on how much you could sell the unit for. Because you bought the unit below market price, so you gained a benefit in that situation. And you should not be allowed to capture that benefit until you've satisfied the affordable period. Now, after you satisfy the affordable period, assuming you paid off your shared appreciation, it would turn into a regular market unit. Speaking of shared appreciation of equity, they both have a version of shared appreciation of equity. And what that's defined as is when you sell your home, a portion of the profit is shared between the buyer and the government. is shared between the buyer and the government, the government being one of those two agencies. So you receive the benefit of buying the unit below market price. You don't get to capture the full amount of that benefit. You would capture most of it and some of it would be shared back with the regulatory agency. That agency would recycle that money and, you know, support other projects to, you know, to, to make sure that more affordable housing is built. So those agencies don't keep the money. And I believe that that is the end of my presentation. It was a, it's typically a three hour class, but I tried to boil it down for you guys and just cover the, probably the, the topics that, you know, everyone cares most about. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Spencer Lee. Board questions? Member Freitas?
Thank you, Spencer, for being here and encapsulating your three hour presentation. Much, much appreciated. But seriously, is, is there a mechanism in place for those who've gone through these classes that, that have gained benefit to this? That we can actually see success? That these things that's being proposed here that was actually worked in real time?
You know, I've seen hundreds of families go through the process. And, you know, I personally have friends and family who have gone through it as well. I think that for the majority of folks, now it's not everybody, but with a lot of the people that I've seen, once they have satisfied the affordable occupancy period and they decide to sell the unit, pay back their shared appreciation, and now that unit is a market unit. Again, I've seen many people sell that unit, capture the appreciation and turn around and, you know, maybe buy something else or, yeah, typically it's to, you know, buy something else. A lot of times these affordable units, you know, they might be a little bit smaller or people don't intend for it to be their forever home. Definitely some people do. But, but yeah, I think that a lot of the benefit is first to get into the housing market when they might not otherwise be able to. Again, that's the target. You know, if you make too much money, these programs are not for you. You should just go buy a regular market unit. And then, you know, after you satisfy the requirements, you know, you do have the option to sell it at market price. So there's a very big benefit there. Your unit or something like that. I, I, I do believe that these benefits are net positive. Yeah, it, it very much helps the people who might not otherwise get into the housing market.
Treasurer Mariana?
Yeah, just, again, thanks for the presentation. You know, reference this program itself, you know, trying to focus on students that left Hawaii to go to the mainland because they can't make ends meet, trying to entice them to come back. You know, I know some family members that want to come back, but they can't afford it. Is there an initiative or something that your organization is doing to try to open up that market so that we can have single families, single individuals or college students coming back to get them into buying property here as part of affordable housing?
Yeah, actually, there's, there's three government programs that come to mind. Thank you for the question so that I can share this information. The first is that the city and county has a down payment assistance loan program where they give up to $40,000 to help someone get into, buy their first home. They have to be 80% or below the area median income. So again, it's for folks who just need that assistance. You know, it's something that, you know, people would pay back slowly, but if you paid back on time, they do forgive a portion of it as well. So that's the City and County Down Payment Assistance Loan Program. The second is the HHFDC has a program called the MCC, which stands for Mortgage Credit Certificate Program. And that's a program where they, again, it's targeted for first time home buyers below a certain AMI and you have to buy a unit below a certain dollar value, where you can get up to 20% of the mortgage interest that you paid to the federal government directly back as a federal tax credit. So let's imagine a situation where you paid $10,000 in mortgage interest last year. 20% of that would be $2,000. So you would get a $2,000 federal tax credit, which is much better than a deduction. So it's a direct dollar for dollar credit. Yeah, as a, you know, you would claim that through your tax, you know, federal tax process. Mortgage Credit Certificate MCC, and that's put on by the HHFDC. And the third program, which is a newer wonderful program, called the DEP, which stands for it's kind of long dwelling unit revolving fund equity program. That's put on by the HHFDC as well, dwelling unit revolving fund equity pilot, excuse me. It's a pilot program now. And in that program, it's targeted for four occupations. That's healthcare workers, educators, law enforcement and agricultural workers. Again, healthcare, educators, law enforcement and agricultural workers. And that's a program where the HHFDC will finance up to 20% of the purchase price of the unit in designated projects where each project has to get approval one by one. And that is intended to help those folks specifically because there's a labor shortage in those industries. So again, very specific in the occupation, but intended for the, the most labor shortage, you know, the industries with the biggest problem with labor.
Any other questions from our board members? Community members, Ms. Kim Coco Iwamoto?
So I just read maybe two articles about two different developer buildings that weren't, the, the developers were not able to sell their affordable, affordable housing units. Did you read about that? I think one is 803, it's called the Block or something. And then the other one is on Kea Moku. It's one of the newer buildings and they have quite a few affordable house. And so they, they, I guess they've been on the market at that price with those requirements and no one's been picking them up. So the developers are stuck. Can you explain that given all of these benefits and perks? How is it that no one's gobbling them up? Then why would developers keep building more if people can't afford it?
Thank you so much. That's a wonderful question. I have heard about those projects. So the first is 803 One Manu. I'm not, you know, I have no inside information about that project, but yes, they do have a lot of units that they've not sold for a very long time. And it's been reported that they are in financial difficulty, particularly with their loan that they took out again, where the HHFDC was the lender. There are two projects to date that have gone to market using the City and County Affordable Housing Regulations. I think it was ordinance 1810 where there is the option for developers to choose to put 30 year deed restrictions on the units. The two developers would be JL Capital as well as Nan Inc., who's building the park on Kea Moku. I think this will be the first time where I'm just going to put my opinion out there. And, and that's that people don't, are not interested in 30 year affordable units. I think that a lot of people, it's hard for people to plan their life in 30 year increments. And most people would pass if given the offer to buy an affordable unit for 30 years where there are deed restrictions. You can't rent it out, you can't move out, you can't sell it. If you do sell it, you know, the, the regulatory body, DPP, would have the option to buy it back from you at 1% simple interest per year that you've occupied it. So I think people, you know, on that topic would feel like they're losing out on gaining appreciation in a normal housing market. I think long-term houses, condos appreciate more than 1% a year. So I think me personally, I would hold out if I could and try to buy a market unit or look for something lower. The balance side, you know, to be balanced, the City and County does try to, you know, did try to help with that 30 year by allowing certain units to, if they didn't sell in the first marketing period, to reduce affordability period to 20 years. Whatever didn't sell moved to 10 years. But I think that when, you know, projects first go to market and everybody sees it's, it's a 30 year, they don't turn around and come back even when they, those affordability periods get reduced to 10 years. And yeah, I think I, to answer your additional question, you know, why would developers build these? I would tell you that, you know, if the more developments have not moved forward than have actually gone to market. So you have the park on Kea Moku, but there's roughly six other projects that got full permitting that decided not to move forward. So I think the short answer is if the regulations are too strict on developers, they're not going to build. I don't think that anybody, you know, would do something to lose money. And yeah, developers are no different.
Thank you. Any other questions? And Spencer, if people want to, oh, council member say.
To keep those units in the affordability market. You go 10 years, after 10 years, you can sell it at the market value. It's not part of the affordable inventory now. So it's a catch, 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 you know? And Spencer, you did a fantastic job. Thank you. And that's the difficulty we have at the city council. All of you and the residents of Almona Kakaako, which we don't have much to do with it, DPP. It is all tied to HCDNA. That's what I told the board a couple of months ago, but those on Kapilani, Kea Moku, wherever you see all those big ones, yeah, that was DPP. And some of them came in for that, you folks all know about the state law, the two on each, where you have to grant them the exemptions on the water hookup, the sewer hookup, the setbacks from the road, the height, the storage, everything, as far as trying to support the developer. Our question at the council was, what is the margin of profitability for the developer that we don't know? Because they don't disclose it to us. I'm looking at the interest of the general public at large. And that's where the difficulty lies. I, I gave a speech this afternoon at the council meeting in regards to insurance, and that's a big one. So when I saw the 30, 30% to 38%, that is already earmarked for a particular conventional loan. Calvin says another 30% on income taxes. That leaves me with only 32% of discretionary spending. The sewer and water and everything else, you're right. Then, but now I can understand the plight of the generation. That's where I'm saying to myself, what can we at the county do today then? In regards to figuring out a way to address this inflationary spiral, spiral that we cannot control and Calvin say a senior citizen stuck on his fixed income. I will have less discretionary money to spend. Because as inflation rises, prices rises, I've got to buy food, my medical. I was talking to my wife about, oh, this is the first two years I've been going to the doctor. And my point is simply just put like this, that I didn't realize how expensive medical costs is. And I'm fortunate to have Medicare. So in closing, no, Spencer, you know, you should run for office or go work for Representative Iwamoto. You'd be a great asset to the state House of Representatives. Thanks.
Thank you, council member. And Spencer, you mentioned that you have like a longer version of this class. How often is that? And if people want to learn more, like how do they just reach out to you? How does that work?
Yeah, I mean, people can reach out and I can share what I do know or if there's any programs, you know, happy to help. But my class is typically intended for realtors. They get credits to maintain their realtor license. So that's the initial, you know, concept of the class. But if anybody reaches out, I'd be happy to share what I know.
Thank you, Mr. Spencer Lee from JL Capital for your presentation this evening.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to sub district reports. Does anyone have any reports from their sub district? Vice Chair Rice?
Thank you, Chair Lee. So last October 3rd, we had a community update with Craig Nakamoto, the Executive Director of HCDNA, about some of the issues or projects that are taking place in the Ward Village area. The most important one is the crosswalk between the two sectors of Kuluwalo Park. A temporary fix was promised as of last week, Friday. I was told that unfortunately the contractor couldn't secure an off-duty police officer, which is required by law, I guess, to when any kind of construction is taking place. So it's been delayed. The community is really, really frustrated and I encourage HCDNA to push harder to make that happen, even if it's a temporary fix, meaning before the community meeting, there were flexible stop signs placed at the island that was built. Those were removed when the island was completed. Well, why can't we put them back up? It's very dangerous. I have so many people every day talk to me about it and it's a serious concern. So HCDNA, please do what you can to put temporary, if you can't put up the temporary beacons because there's no police officer to help, then let's do something else. Let's get creative and put some agencies together and figure this one out. The playground at Kuluwalo Park is scheduled to be completed around the first week of November. They are making great progress, so that's very exciting for all the families in our neighborhood and families that come to that area, which is a daily occurrence. And lastly, the Kuluwalo Park Off Leash Dog Park, it was decided at the meeting to do it right the first time, meaning there was a lengthy discussion about we could open up the park and the sod wouldn't be fully attached, if you will, to the earth. So we let the puppies in and they're all having a grand time, but within a month's period, the sod looks like crap. So then we'd have to close the dog park for a period of three months and reopen it. So which way do we want to go? So there's a lengthy discussion and then a few attendees said, well, Jeannie, this is your baby. What do you want? And I said, I want to do it right the first time. So we're going to wait till January. Hopefully it'll be done by January. They're working hard. I walk by there every day. I talk to the foreman every day. And I think it's going to be a magnificent addition to the neighborhood. There are a lot of Hawaiian cultural aspects to this dog park. And as Craig said, it's going to be the most beautiful dog park on this island, if not the state. So when it happens, we'll encourage everybody to come on down. Calvin, I hope you'll be there and, and see how happy the puppies are. And then my only other comment is, and I should have brought it up, when Emma Davis was speaking about the Action Committee, has there been any further discussion? Kathleen, perhaps you know, with the Director of Parks and Rec, Laura Thielen, about dogs in Alamoana. Today, I'm sitting at the traffic light at Pei Koip, facing the ocean, and I see this guy and his five puppies having a grand time, throwing the ball, running off leash. Where are the officers supposedly handing out tickets? They weren't there. My understanding from people in the neighborhood is that the police are usually at Magic Island early in the morning, like 6:00, 6:30, when people are walking their dogs before they go to work. And those are the people getting ticketed. On the west side of the park, they're not getting ticketed or in the middle. So we need to be fair. If we're going to ticket people, let's ticket them all. If you can't ticket them all, then stop ticketing them. And the other thing is that these people are going to court either via Zoom or in person, and the cases are thrown out because the officers aren't attending. So we just need to be fair and it's really, a solution needs to come into play with the Department of Parks and Rec. Because one little dog park in Kuluwalo Park and the other one by Fisher Hawaii, that's all we've got in the neighborhood. And that's not enough when all of these buildings are being built and they're all dog-friendly. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Rice. And to answer your question, we have not had further discussions, but we are working on, since we're working on that special meeting with our discussion with our enthusiasts, both for pickleball and tennis. And since both topics do involve the Department of Parks and Recreation, we can talk about having a special meeting outside of the Action Committee meeting, so we can talk about it further in detail. I know Laura Thielen had mentioned on the pickleball matter that they are willing to come in. And because there was one Action Committee meeting where we talked about both subjects. So we can bring that up to her again and then have this special meeting just so we can get more answers out of them.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you. And that was, I commend you and acknowledge you for bringing the community together on October 3rd. I saw a lot of individuals and their dogs, and it was a pretty good turnout, which to me is indicative of the neighborhood wanting to have dog parks in the area. So thank you for organizing that.
Okay, any other sub-district reports? Okay, let's move on. Residents and community concern. Anyone here in the audience? Mr. Roy Howard.
Roy Howard, Alamoana resident. Dogs at Alamoana Park. I'm going to read this so I don't go off script. The Pareto Principle, 80/20 rule comes into play. We're punishing 80% of the people for the wrongs of 20% is probably worse than that. In this case, the ratio is probably even higher, maybe even 99 to 1. Dog owners without question should be allowed to walk their leashed dogs and pick up after them. The 20% or more accurately, probably 1% or less that do not leash or pick up after their dogs are the ones that should be held accountable, but not punish the 99%. The bacteria from feces argument from dogs in the park is questionable at best when you consider the amount of feral cats that there are there. We must stop punishing the majority who abide by the rules because of the few that do not. That is the lazy and easy way out, but not the fairest. Please allow leashed dogs to walk in the park. In any conjunction, if it is felt necessary, create a separate space for dogs to run loose. Then hold violators accountable. From the Action Committee meeting, it was brought up about possibly doing a Kakaako pedestrian walkway. The consideration of using a street in Kakaako as a pedestrian walkway came up at the Action Committee meeting. The thought is to possibly use Hawaii Street for pedestrian-only traffic. Although this would take away street currently used by automobiles, the rationalization is that since Hawaii Street is of low use by automobiles, the other local streets could easily absorb the minimal increase in traffic flow and would be able to accommodate the growing need for safe foot travel in the neighborhood. Repurpose underutilized reforce resource for the benefit of a current need. Sounds like a good idea and with reasonable inferences based on current conditions. I wholeheartedly agree. Let's apply this reasoning to tennis and pickleball at Alamoana. Since I first brought up the idea of approving the pickleball conditions of Alamoana, a lot has occurred that includes misinformation and misunderstandings as to what my request is, both for short and long-term resolutions and what the data shows. So I feel the need to clarify. Using the same reasoning as noted above with the pedestrian walkway idea, repurposing an underutilized resource for the benefit of an underrepresented group, I submit that current conditions and data collected easily support the short-term resolution of converting two tennis courts for pickleball-only use until such time as a more medium-to-long-term solution with multiple pickleball courts is constructed at Alamoana. At the request of NB11, data was collected throughout the day over a 15-day period with over 1,200 data points from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM. Multiple random follow-up visuals were done since that time, including as recently as yesterday morning. I have hundreds of time and date-stamped photos and videos documenting the results. Even a biased TV interview story showed over 30 pickleball players waiting to play with no such issue for tennis, only feelings and emotional sentiments. Stack this evidence up against rebuttals that include visiting the court on one occasion to play tennis and talk with tennis players, handpicking a single data point to compare tennis versus pickleball, the missing single-day Parks and Rec RISA report, no definition of what Parks and Rec deems to be heavy utilization, and no stated goals of what utilization rate for fertilitys Parks and Rec seeks. The only thing I've heard is quote, is sharing is caring. The documented evidence and unbiased conclusions clearly shows that the short-term two tennis courts could be loaned to pickleball with minimal impact on tennis, just as taking the Hawaii Street would have minimal effect on automobile traffic, all for the greater good. The difference here is that the intent is for the loaned pickleball courts to be ultimately converted back to tennis. The two tennis courts, preferably six and seven, would allow for eight pickleball courts, would be painted for pickleball only and have permanent pickleball nets. The tennis nets would not be removed. They would stay in place. Not only does this alleviate the extraordinary wait times for pickleball players during open play, it improves the inferior pickleball play conditions which currently exist, includes sharing the court with tennis practice players, AM and PM sun in pickleball players' eyes and inadequate lighting. This will also promote further use throughout the day and make pickleball available to the urban core currently not represented in the neighborhood. Not all potential players own nets. The wall practice area could then be split 50/50, use for each sport to use as needed. An exceedingly fair compromise of eight pickleball courts, eight tennis courts, and a 50/50 shared practice area, all all until a more permanent pickleball facility is completed. Please remember, sharing is caring. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Roy Howard. We appreciate you coming to both our Action Committee meetings and regular meetings as well. So thank you. Okay, we have, ma'am, if you could state your name and then we'll go online as well for another community concern.
Yeah, my name's Christina. I'm a resident here and I thoroughly enjoy Alamoana Park and swimming. That's where I go to swim. However, I have noticed over the last year that the dogs have increased immensely. And I also swim sometimes in Kaialua Beach. And it looks like our beach here is becoming more like the beach there. And it's not an issue about dog poop. It really isn't about the poop. As a parent, my child, when he was young, was very much afraid of dogs. And it seems unfair that we have these signs that just because we have new residents who don't like the rule, they're bringing their dogs all the way into the water at times, right? And so we have to decide, do we want this space to be shared space with everybody and their pets? It shouldn't just stop with dogs, right? That means we're going to have the birds coming in, trying to collect a little money with pictures and things like that. Are we going to commercialize it a little bit? I mean, it can get very extreme, right? Because one pet is a pet, right? But more focused is the fact that it's unfair that we don't have a space here for people who don't want to be or not other people's pets. I love pets, but that's not fair that I have to be imposed on someone else's pet. And they, even though some of them are leashed, a lot of them aren't, as you mentioned, right? And they feel like, hey, my dog's safe. They're not always safe. I owned a dog that bit my best friend, never bit anyone else. And I don't think that we should have to go to the parks and feel concerned about other people's pets. They should be banned at Alamoana Park as they are and it should be enforced. I don't care if one person gets a ticket or 20. I want it enforced. And it doesn't have to be 100%, but I do like to, would like to see the law enforcement do a little better job because the evening times, I never see the police officers. I'm glad they're coming in the mornings. It'd be nice if they came in the evenings. And I tell you what, you start ticketing a few people, some people will stop. It only takes once and they'll stop. So I say, thank you for enforcing it, but let's keep doing it and do it a little bit more maybe even. But somehow we have to teach the new residents that this is not okay. Because I tell you what, local residents don't typically bring, people who've been here long-term don't typically bring their dogs. And you can tell, you're sitting at the beach, you can see who's bringing dogs, who's not bringing dogs, you know? And I just want to bring that up as a concern because if this not going to be Alamoana Park, where's it going to be? We can go somewhere and access the beach, access the ocean without having to worry about other people's pets. Thank you.
Christina, thank you for showing your perspective. We have Mr. Steve Davidson online and then ma'am, you can go after. Mr. Davidson, your mic is off, so we're unable to hear you currently.
How's that?
We can hear you.
Great. Thank you. I'm Steve Davidson. I'm a race director with Mid-Pacific Roadrunner Club. And I'm just here to give you an update on our annual Santa Hat 5K. We do this race, run, walk every year at Magic Island. This year will be on December 1st, from 4:00 PM to probably 7:00 PM, the very latest. We'll have about 400 participants, which we have every year. We do not close any roads. We don't close any part of the park. Our runners and walkers and families go around Magic Island and around the park. It's a very festive occasion. It is our Santa Hat race. Everybody wears Santa hats. We'll have Santa there this year as we do every year. And this year we're adding a one-mile run after the 5K. The 5K is 3.1 miles. After that, we're adding a one-mile run for children and for those who don't want to do the full 5K. It's a very fun event and we hope that some of you will come and join us.
Mr. Davidson, thank you. If people are required to sign up, where do they go? Is it online or do they have to go to a particular brick and mortar place?
Thank you. They go to MidPacific Roadrunner Club. Just Google that or mprrc.org and you'll see a schedule of all of our races this year and just look for Santa Hat on December 1st.
Thank you for that information. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
We have another community member in the audience who wanted to say something. And ma'am, if you could state your name right before your community concern.
Aloha. My name is Sherry Hauser. I'm currently employed at the Hilton Hawaiian Village for the past 18 years. Hilton Hawaiian Village is a unite here, which we're a local five-union property. Our union contract is up. After months of unsuccessful negotiations, 1,800 of us walked off our jobs September 24th. So today marks day 29. I'm sure you've heard us in the neighborhood. You know, we don't want to be out there. You know, we're working hard. We're walking back and forth chanting, singing on the picket line. You know, we, there's a lot of financial disparity at this point. 29 days is, we're approaching that one-month marker. And you know, it takes a village to come together and we're marching in solidarity. Just a little bit of factual, Hilton Hawaiian Village is no longer owned by the Hilton Corporation. It was purchased by Park Hotel and Resort. It's a mainland real estate investment trust that consists of 41 hand-picked cherry properties from Hilton to Hyatt to Marriott. And they're located in prime real estate markets. They yield very high revenue for their shareholders. Park took advantage of us during, after COVID with cuts to staffing, guest services, the perks, the amenities. These cuts affected not only our workload in all departments, it jeopardizes a safe working environment for us. Every day, you know, thousands of hospitality workers struggle just to get ahead and can't provide the same level of service that for years we've been able to offer our guests staying there. They pay for that. They deserve it. We're fighting for a livable wage. You know, we'd like to restore our permanent layoffs. We're overworked, understaffed, and we feel undervalued. We're asking the community at this time, friends, relatives, not to cross our picket line. No vacations, parties, events. Instead, please support our local community, our working-class families. By crossing the picket line, it's supporting, you know, mainland corporate greed. You know, these are real struggles that we're facing right now at this point. We also ask, you know, if anyone would like to support, we do have a hardship fund. And basically whether it is monetary value, we would love the community, any organization that wants to come out, you know, strike with us, you know, put on a sign, soapbox, you know, help us just get through the day. Because at the end of the day, you know, there's, we're just waiting. We're waiting for that negotiation time period where Park Hotel and Resorts will, will come to terms with us and start the negotiation. You know, people drop off water, you know, oranges, whatever it is that you can do for us. We really appreciate it. Again, thank you very much for your time and your consideration. I appreciate that. Thank you. Any questions?
Okay, thank you for being here this evening at our neighborhood board meeting.
Thank you, thank you.
If no other community concerns, we will move on to agency reports, starting with HCDAs. HCDAs online this evening? Okay. Honolulu Authority for Rapid Transportation?
Aloha, Chair Lee. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Hi, Patrick Watson with Honolulu Consulting Public Information Management. On behalf of Frank V. Kalusho Construction, and I just wanted to provide you a brief reminder that our next city center utility relocation business and community meeting is going to be happening Thursday, October 31st at 1:00 PM. I put the information and the links in the chat. So beyond that, I'm just here to provide a reminder to the community to attend if possible, all right? And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Patrick Watson, for being here this evening.
All right, aloha.
Honolulu Board of Water Supply, I don't see them here or online. Elected official reports. Do we have Councilmember Tyler Dos Santos Tam or Robyn Henskey online?
Yes, I'm here. Hi, everyone. Okay. So really quickly, I've included our newsletter, our October newsletter in the chat. And I wanted to share that mostly that we have introduced most recently our Bill 52. It is a measure concerning e-bikes. And as we know and we've seen in the news, and I think it's touched upon in the board frequently, the recent injuries and fatalities. And so our office wants to focus on classifying e-bikes, especially with the various speeds and wattages. So far, we have a small working group with DTS that we've been working with. And special considerations that have been discussed have been if there should or should not be a helmet requirement, the different definitions, including the classification systems, defining dangerous behavior and possibly licensing and registration for these vehicles. It's an ongoing process. I know with the, the, the big industry of e-bikes that there's going to be different devices that we can't classify yet, but we will try to make more of a comprehensive approach to this legislation. And if you guys have any questions, I am here.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Robyn Henskey. Questions? Okay, thank you. Councilmember Calvin Seay.
Thank you very much, everyone. May I defer to my staff, Pua, who's online right now? I did, my report is in the chat. And if there's any questions, I'm happy to, but Pua, would you like to report to the board and the residents of Alamoana, Kaka?
Yes, boss, no problem.
Okay, go right ahead.
Okay. So sorry. Oh, okay, I'm sorry, my video's not working at the moment. Aloha, everyone, this is Pua from Councilmember Seay's office. I hope everybody's having a good evening tonight. We have the information of boss's October monthly news report found in the chat. We also have some significant web, website links in the chat that's important for the community. On September 21st, 2024, the practice court was restripped for pickleball play at Alamoana Beach Park. The link is in the article that we have in the chat as well. We do have the link to the real property tax timeline, so please be aware of the important dates that we have available. If you're a homeowner and you have to have the real property tax, if that affects you. The modification of the bus routes, just as a reminder, there is modifications. If there's any feedback, please let the, the, you can, you can go to their website, I'm sorry, the bus, www.thebus.org, rider alerts ASAP. And then, let me see. The other things that we have in regards to constituents, or actually things that are happening in our community currently is, let's see. There's fire ants, there was currently a call that there's fire ants at Alamoana Beach Park. So please be aware of that and that we are working, we actually submitted a request for investigation, sorry, a request for investigative services to, to the Department of Planning and Perman, uh, I'm sorry, the Department of Parks and Recreation, and that's in progress right now. We also have situations with graffiti on, on the fence along Kapilani Boulevard, which we're working with the Department of Planning and Permanently on. We also, there's a situation with park tour buses at Alamoana Beach Park and Magic Island. So we're working with DPR on that. And then the, there's repairs that's going to be done on the Honolulu Convention Center rooftop terrace deck. And we're working on that right now. Other than that, we have, oh, I'm sorry. A request was done last week by Alamoana Board Member Jeannie Rice, requested assistance from HPD during the neighborhood board meeting that delivery vehicles as well as general public have been illegally parking for extended periods of time around Owahi and Keavie Streets on, and Keavie Streets on the Malka area of Salt and Kakaako, especially the trolley stop. So we did submit a request for investigation services and referred it to the police. The final response was in District 1, Central Honolulu Patrol Officers checked the area by Owahi, by Owahi and Keavie Streets to address the complaint of illegal parking. During the checks, no parking violations were observed in the area, but the officers are still having that area be aware on and on their route for observance. Other than that, if you have any questions, by all means, we are, we are available for here, for you. Mahalo.
Thank you, Pua, and Councilmember Seay for being here this evening. Mayor's office with Mr. Ben Sullivan.
Thanks, board members, appreciate the opportunity to give a really brief presentation. I believe you all received the mayor's newsletter on a monthly basis. Can I get some nods just to make sure? So I, I guess it's available online and I'll tease for others that there's some great information in there. Updates on the renovation at Waikiki Shell, an update about another ocean safety lifeguard tower being added. So we're really happy that, that that progress is, is there to make people safe. That's a mayor's priority is public safety for sure. Some improvements at the medical examiner's office, so that's really exciting. But that's all stuff you can read about on your own, so I'm going to, I'm going to skip the rest of that. The only response I really wanted to spend time with, there's two responses I was given here, but one we covered last month, and that is the discussion around Alamoana and the, the dog park question. So the other one was with regards to the lighting, the streetlights that were out at Ryecroft, Ahana, and the corner of Leona and Kaheka. Let's see, I barely can see with my contacts this late in the day. But all those have been fixed, this is, um, this is DFM reporting back that, that all those areas, the lights have been fixed. Let me see, it says Ryecroft and Ahana were all put back online on 9/26, and then it took an extra day to get the other one in place. So happy to report that the lights are back on, I hope they're not off again, but you know how that goes. We fix something and then it breaks again and we have to go chase and fix it again, so that's, that's the job. But, you know, I really enjoyed the, the meeting tonight. Actually, Chair Lee, I don't know if it was your idea to bring the Mr. Lee to the meeting, but I thought it was really insightful and really useful because that issue of affordable housing always comes up. And that question about like, what does it really mean to be affordable? People are frustrated because they don't understand kind of the push and pull of that. And I, you know, Councilmember Seay certainly does with his, with his history of work. But, but it's really good, I think, for others to hear that this is, this is not an easy question. It's not simply a matter of demanding that developers build for less. So thank you for, thank you for bringing that information to the meeting. I don't know if there's any questions?
Questions? Senator Mariano?
Yeah, well, is it possible to have neighborhood boards to get together and get more definition on the sunshine law? You know, recently we've received some, some correspondence reference the sunshine law.
Sure.
And since it can be not sunshine enough. But bottom line is, you know, we here at the neighborhood board, you know, we represent the community. We try our best to do what we want to do, but if we were to go, I guess, from what I read, unless I misinterpreted, if I follow, cross all the Ts and dot all the I, then our hands are kind of tied and we just really just to sit here as a neighborhood board and just to receive, to ask questions, follow-up questions like we normally do, we have to bring it up at the next meeting. And there's no guarantee that the presenter will be there. So is it possible to get additional training so that all neighborhood boards can get a better understanding of the sunshine law, what it means, how it should be interpreted? And at the same time, we can also pass it out to the general public as well?
So it sounds like what you're asking for is a consolidated training for all boards. So I would defer to NCO on that question, but certainly that's a question I think they can respond to you on. I do know that, that the Director of the Neighborhood Commission is looking at the neighborhood planning, you know, neighborhood plan now for potential reforms to do exactly what you're talking about, to figure out how the system can better represent people in the community and, and how we can support you in doing that. Because we know that you all care about getting the word out, making sure people understand what's happening, getting, giving them a voice, but it's not always easy. The one thing I'll say about the sunshine law, and I am not even in the room when it talks about expertise on the sunshine law, but the one thing I've heard over and over from attorneys is it's not there to make our job easier, it's there to make the, the process more transparent for the public. And so sometimes it is clumsy and awkward and that's just a function of it. It's a state, you know, it's a state law, so it's not something the city can modify. And, and it is absolutely there just to make sure with, you know, with a lot of provisions to, to be sure that people have the opportunity to see what's going on and how decisions are being made.
Understood, yeah, thank you for that. And then if you can follow up, because I think at the last board that we talked about, particularly with pickleball, as you can see, the passion that we all have for pickleball and tennis. You know, there's some parks that needs to have some lighting or to work some things out so that we can open up pickleball because it's a growing sport. And so that there's not a us against them, it's a we, you know, because it's all of Hawaii wants to enjoy both pickleball and tennis. And so if you can go back and maybe ask the Park and Recreation to see what can be done to accelerate the process. Because my understanding from the last board meeting, there's other parks that's available, but not enough lighting. And so if they can do the lighting like they do at Alamoana Park, Beach Park, then it should open up more opportunities.
So I, I appreciate that comment. I will ask the, the board if they would like me to carry that question or if you already have channels. Because one of, one of the things that does create some inefficiency in our ability to execute for, for the public is kind of multiple disparate asks of agencies. And my understanding is that you're already in touch with Director Thielen of Department of Parks and Recreation on these questions and perhaps have an upcoming invite to her, which would really, Member Mariano, which would be the great, the great and appropriate place for you to raise these issues.
Yeah.
If not, I, I'm happy to bring them back separately, I just don't want to be redundant.
Madam Chair, I, you know, we still have that opening, but it will also be good to have him take it back to the mayor. So then you can get a top-down and a bottom-up approach and then we can find a happy medium to work out the pickleball.
We'll put it in the notes.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. We have a question from a community member online. We don't have the name, but could you state your name before you mention your comment?
Yes, hi, my name is Taylor and I'm a resident at Alamoana. And I like to comment that currently we have three pickleball courts, but we do not have enough for everyone. And the wait lines is so long that sometime when I start coming out at 5:00, maybe I get to play one or two times and then that goes 7:00 PM. So three courts, it's just not enough for the thousand of residents that's in the area to play. The second thing I want to talk about is dogs at Alamoana. In our area right now, there's not many dogs parked. And there's, the Alamoana part is huge. There's a beach side and there's a park side for not restricting, not allowing owners to walk the dog when they're paying high price of taxes in that area, to live in that area and restricting them. And on top of that, most of the dogs are like children to these owners. Millennials don't have children, not many have it, they have dogs. So to them, they're considered dogs of their children. So to restrict them because one person does not want to see a dog at the park at the beach side is just not right. And I'm asking you to consider that to allow at least owners to walk their dogs with the leash on. And also to allow more pickleball courts in that area so that we all can come enjoy the, the area along with the surfer, along with those swimmers. Someone doesn't know how to swim, but we don't have to play pickleball. Thank you.
Thank you. Did we get your name right? Is it Taylor or Kayla?
Kayla, K-A-Y-L-O.
Okay, thank you for your feedback. It reinforces that we are talking about the same things, pickleball, tennis, and dog parks. So thank you for your comment this evening. Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Senator Sharon Morawaki's office, I see Mr. Charles Izumoto online.
Aloha Chair and members, you have our report in the chat. Apologies that Senator Morawaki couldn't be here. A couple of things since HCDAs, I guess, wasn't able to attend, but they had their Kakaako board meeting on October 2nd. There was two items that were interesting. One is that they wanted to authorize, or there was an item to authorize the Executive Director Craig Nakamura to reengage stakeholders on land use in Kakaako Makai. That was approved. There's a very long history about Kakaako Makai and residential development there. And I'm sure a lot of people are familiar with that, it's in our report. Also, so they authorized him to reengage the community on that. Second thing is disputed streets, Kakaako Land Company and the whole thing where they said that they owned the streets and then they're charging for people. So the legislature, as you probably know, created a law a couple, several years ago where if you are charging people to use these private streets, you have to keep it up to snuff with city standards. And KLC didn't do that. This case was initiated by HCDAs, but it was sort of delayed based on appellate reasons. But since those legal reasons cleared up, then Craig Nakamoto asked that they be allowed to reinstate the contested case proceedings. So now we want to go after KLC for not maintaining the streets while still charging people at the same time. And that's a couple interesting things that happened at the last meeting. Also, we're hoping that you can fill out our community survey. There's a link in our report on Survey Monkey. And what we do is we get information from our constituents every year in order to consider it for legislation that we want to introduce in the upcoming session. We'd really appreciate if you could do that. Other than that, I can take any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Charles Izumoto, questions? Okay, thank you for being here this evening.
Thanks.
Representative Scott Nishimoto or Taylor Date, who is online?
Oh, aloha Chair and Board, thank you for hosting this meeting. I'm just reporting on behalf of my boss. We don't really have any updates to share, but I'm happy to take anything back to Representative Nishimoto.
Okay. Thank you, Taylor, appreciate you being here tonight.
Thank you.
Representative Adrian Tam?
Hi, can y'all hear me?
Yes.
Okay, this is Flora, Representative Tam's office manager. We don't have any major updates. Representative Tam has been attending the Governor's Condo Insurance Task Force meetings. We don't have any major updates at this time. As soon as we do, we will pass them along, but he is actively engaged with the task force, which meets monthly. Other than that, we did have one call this month about dogs at Alamoana, which we've absolutely already touched on in this meeting. The complaint was to bar them from the beach side. Other than that, I don't have any other major updates. But I'm happy to take any questions, concerns back to the representative. We are gearing up for the 2025 legislative session. So if you have bill ideas, things you want to see that can be actionable at the state level, please feel free to email the representative.
Thank you, Flora, for that report for this evening. Speaker Scott Psyki or Frank Rajoszansky from Speaker's office? Okay. Ashton Stallings and Kayla from Governor Green's office?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, perfect, sorry, I apologize. My connection keeps freezing when I turn the camera on, so I'm just going to leave it off for now. But I'm Kayla Setzler, one of your Governor's Greens representatives. We shared this month's Governor's Newsletter in the chat for anyone who's interested in reading the full report. But just a few highlights from this month. Governor Green concluded his trip to Japan to strengthen Hawaii and Japan relations. We also, the state increased funding by 2.3 million to UH's Maui wildfire exposure study. This is to address the long-term health and social impacts of the wildfire. The state facilitated Maui Economic Recovery Commission also convened its third and final meeting to discuss plans for Maui's economic recovery. This included a Lahaina Business Park and plans for rebuilding the Lahaina Harbor. And then finally, there's some fun highlights in there from the 2024 Governor's Awards, which honors the state executive branch employees, managers, and teams. Again, the newsletter is in the chat for anyone who's interested in reading the full report. And just let me know if you guys have any questions or concern for us that we can take back to Governor Green's office. Thank you.
Thank you, Kayla, vice chair Rice.
Hi, Kayla, thank you for your report and for being here. My question is this, I own a tourism activity business and probably the majority of our customers are from Japan. There have been many, many goodwill missions to Japan by various governmental agencies and Governor Green. This isn't the first one. What happens? You go and you shake hands with various people. I just don't understand the purpose of a trip to Japan when it's the Japan economy that is preventing people from Japan who love Hawaii to come here. They can't afford it. The wealthy are coming and they're spending, but they're not spending like they used to. So what kind of meetings take place? What are the results of the trip other than shaking hands and a photo? So what kind of meetings take place? What are the results of the trip other than shaking hands and a photo opportunity? What happened that's going to bring the visitors from Japan back to Hawaii? Thank you.
Yes, no problem. Um, I know from this one, they opened up the first Tokyo International Gift Show. I know they also had an event for the Merry Monarch Festival, um, in Japan to kind of bring that over to them. Um, I think they also visited Hawaii's sister states, uh, to increase those relations. But I can also bring that back to Governor Green's office and get a full, deeper report.
I would appreciate that. I think a lot of people will.
Yes.
Would, excuse me, and I think if someone would go to Waikiki and see how many restaurants have closed, how many shops have closed, how much retail space there is available, and it impacts not just Waikiki and the visitor industry, it impacts the entire state. Because if hotels have less visitors staying in the hotels, then they need less laundry to be done. So that impacts the laundry companies. It also impacts the food companies. Hilton Hawaiian Village, the ladies that were just here, they were on strike even before the strike. Almost all of their restaurants are closed because there's nobody staying in the hotel. So that impacts the food purveyors. It impacts the staff. So having a meeting is wonderful. Ends in a photo op is wonderful. What is being done? I want substance as to what was the purpose of the meeting other than saying hello, please come to Hawaii? That isn't going to get anybody on a plane to hear what needs to be done, and you could share this. The airlines, oh yeah, will lower the airfares from the mainland, U S mainland to Hawaii, but they don't do it for Japan. If you compare the airfare rates, and it's a longer flight, yes. But if you compare the airfare rates before the pandemic, you, and even a few weeks ago, you could fly to Japan for six hundred dollars round trip from here. But that same flight from Japan to here is almost double. There's something wrong. And then the airlines are cutting the number of flights that are coming to Hawaii. That's wrong. We have to make it affordable for the people from Japan to come. Because U S mainland, they may be coming on cheaper air flights and fares, and they may be getting better rates, but they're not spending. They are not spending. And you could talk to every activity operator, you could talk to P C C, you could talk to Kualoa Ranch, you could talk to Sea Life Park, you could talk to me as a small activity provider, how desperate we are to get our Japanese visitors back. We need to welcome them with open arms. We need to take action. And they need, we need as a state to put pressure on the airlines and put pressure on the hotels to lower the rates and the fares so these people can come and enjoy what Hawaii has to offer. I look forward to your answers, hopefully next month, if not before. Thank you.
Hey, thank you. Vice Chair Rice. Moving on to announcements, we have our social media accounts. Honolulu Land Market is on November second. Our next regular board meeting is on November twenty-sixth. That is going, oh, right, November twenty-sixth, that's going to be the last one for the year. And we have our Action Committee meeting. Um, before that, I believe we'll have one more Action Committee meeting in December, but no regular meeting. And this meeting is adjourned at eight, eighteen P M.